Good evening. I call to order the April meeting of the Florence City Planning Commission. And as I always say, on behalf of the Commissioners here tonight and the planning staff, we really appreciate your participation. We want this room full and we like you being here. So, thank you. My hat's off to you. On a beautiful day like today, it's hard to come to something like this. Trust me, we know. So, with that said, I will pull my agenda out. And we will have our invocation and a pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Moses, would you give our invocation?
Be more than glad to. Always remember, let's pray for one another because we don't know when it'll be our last time. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this gathering here today to do the work for the citizens of Florence. Lord, we know that we can't do everything that everybody wants to do, but we have to make our judgment for everything we have to do. Dear Lord, you want to protect us and guide us through this meeting, make sure we make the right decision, make sure everyone is pleased, make sure if one is not pleased, they go back and they think about things they have to do for themselves. These are the blessed, that's in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Moses. Will you all stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for the participation. The next item is approval of last month's minutes. The Commissioners, as usual, Ms. Lane gets those out timely. We have a chance to ask Commissioners to review the packet, go through the minutes. And if there are no changes, corrections, or additions, I will call for a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, a second to approve is submitted, or are there any discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay, and the ayes have it. All right. The next item on the agenda is PC 2025-15. Many of y'all here tonight attended last month, thank you. We have delayed our decision for lack of a motion last month, so it's back on the agenda this month. If you recall, my company has some involvement with this, so I have to recuse myself. And I've asked Dr. Lohorn to step in for me as Chair on this item. I would like to bring to your attention before I hand this over to Dr. Lohorn. There's not a public hearing. Since we had one last month, there's not a public hearing, so we will not be having anyone far or against come up in favor or against to speak to the Commissioners. I will say that the Chair does have some discretion. And I hate to put that on Dr. Lohorn at this point, but typically, most of the discussions were heard last month unless it's a very unique circumstance. If he does elect to let one person speak, he's got to let another person speak that might be against. So, we'd have one and one. So, with that said, I will pass the gavel over to Dr. Lohorn. You can do it from that chair if you like.
That'd be fine.
And I have to go down the audience.
All right. So, Jan Adam, this is PC 2025-15. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes. Again, once again, this is concerning the parcel at the corner of Tuscana Drive and West Palmetto Street that contains the home center, shopping center. And the applicant is requesting to subdivide off the northern one, little over an acre of it, annex that into the city and zone it NC 6.3 with the intention of building townhouses Which is in accordance with the future land use. And as it stands in the county right now, it is unzoned and he could put anything he wanted to there as it stands right now. There was some question about the common areas and the association is responsible for maintaining the lawn or other beautification treatment along the right-of-way for, it says US Highway 76, I believe they mean Tuscana Drive. But the property was, or the road and its right-of-way were conveyed to the city at the time of closeout of Villa Tuscana, Phases 1 and 2. Which is standard practice. So, we just didn't have that confirmation before, but other than that, nothing has changed in the request. So, that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. All right. Any questions from Commissioners to the staff?
Have there been any developments? We sort of tabled this with the host.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
All right.
We're sort of where we were last month.
Okay. Well, I am a little unorthodox. For the benefit of our Commissioners that may have not been here last time, and this is important for everybody to come back out, I'm going to allow one person to speak for and one person to speak against. I normally start with the person to speak against. So, strictly to benefit of the people that weren't here last week on the behalf of Commissioners. So, do I have someone who wants to speak against? All right. Sir, come forward, state your name, please. We're going to keep it to about a three-minute deal? If you can, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Ken Winslow. At this last hearing, we were requested, our community, Villa Tuscana, was to reach out to the builder, Mr. Hopkins, and try to work something out. I tried that a week ago today. We had a very short conversation. I suggested to him that if he were to build houses there, that we would be acceptable to that and would even consider bringing these homes into our community. I was told that wasn't a viable project for him. Also, he told me at that time that we're better off being in the city, this project being in the city, rather than being in the county because of certain city ordinances wouldn't apply to the county. For instance, buffer areas and maybe offsets from the property pins. So, we simply, our community consists of approximately, well, we've got 77 homes, we've got about 175 people that live within our community. The last few days, we're not familiar with how y'all run things here, and we had to find out when this next hearing was, which we found out, and we could go yesterday, that this hearing was tonight. We didn't know that it was a private meeting. I appreciate you letting me speak. But since then, we have gone out and we have a campaign going on that our members, homeowners, sign an objection letter, objecting to this project altogether. We have 61 of them right now signed by individuals within our community opposing this project. Now, if we were to have another week, we could probably end up with 160 of them. Because we don't know how this works, we don't have them. It was also mentioned at the last hearing that there was a townhouse project next to us. Now, and for some reason, the neighbor next to us is the Reserve. They weren't notified at this hearing, yet that road comes right alongside them. There's a townhouse there that's got five units in it, it's within 125 feet of this property line. Those five townhouses there are completely different from what Mr. Hopkins proposes to build. They're beautiful structures, they're probably valued at $400,000. The homes in our community are approximately $350,000 value.
Thirty more seconds, sir.
Okay. I just asked that if you were us, what would y'all be doing? What would you want done here? Would they allow this, if this was a lazer place? And we're not millionaires, we're just common people. But would you allow this at lazer place? We're no different than them, but we just don't have the size homes that they have out there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. Does anybody speak for this project? If there is, please state your name. We're going to hold it to three to four minutes.
Hey, good evening. I'm Louie Hopkins. I was here last month. And I did speak to Mr. Winslow, and he did offer, you know, putting single-family there, but it's like a 1.3 acre site. It's right beside a commercial project. I mean, nobody really wants to live right beside a strip mall with storage buildings. And I think the townhomes are a good buffer between commercial and residential. If you look at the map that Elaine showed earlier, right behind this property is their stormwater detention pond. I'm not sure how big it is, but there's only one property in their neighborhood that touches this property. So, right, probably 80% of this property line that touches Villa Tuscana is a big green space with a holding pond. So, it's not like we're backing up to five neighbors. So, it's totally different. But after I left last month, I went back to the county and I talked to them, and they said, "Listen, our density rules, we don't have them. You can do three-story apartments here. You know, I can get more units here, leaving it as it's zoned right now in the county." So, we would like to be in the city, we would like to have these zones for townhomes, which is more restrictive. It will be less units for us, it'll be a nicer project. But if we aren't able to get this, we're definitely going to do apartments because we can go and do that right now. So, that's kind of where we're at. Any questions?
Any questions from Commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I just felt compelled to do that for the Commissioners that went here last week, want to hear one more time, keep it fresh in our brains. So, sorry, true, I just don't want to do. Okay. Do we have any discussion or questions amongst the Commissioners? Any discussion at all?
What he's saying, if we don't zone it, he's going to build apartment houses, which will make the place look different.
That's correct. From what I gather, last week and this week, he can build apartments that has more density than the condos. The county doesn't, the county, I know for a fact, the county buffers are smaller and there is no density. In the city, at least, we can control how many you can put there. The buffers are more in the city, if I'm not mistaken, I think, Lane, right? You know, it's more restrictive. It's more restrictive if we decide to do this tonight. So, of course, that's good City Council, but I'm just saying, it's less units when I talk to them in the county about apartments versus condos.
And my view on this is the same as it was last month. He can do whatever he wants to there. He can build a chicken coop, a hog farm, or apartments, or, I mean, whatever he wants, it is unzoned. And while I do respect and understand the neighborhood's feelings on this, I think, you know, I think he's, I think the city will, because of the limitations and restrictions and oversight the city has, it will be more controlled over what happens than there would be if he went in a different direction. And that's how I feel about it.
Is my understanding that it's 26 units?
That's the maximum.
The maximum amount? Okay.
For the condos?
The townhouses.
For what he's, I'm sorry, for the town, what he's proposing, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. There was an issue about the maintenance of the road, I think, last month. And as I recall, he was willing to pay for his half of the road or his side of the road, the maintenance for that. That was one of the issues that were raised. I don't recall what the other one was, but I remember it being somewhat resolved. You know, the biggest issue was just about, you know, whether the community wanted that development there or not.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. I'll call for the motion.
I'm going to move that we approve. And for the reasons that I just outlined, I think that the project will be better controlled, the buffers are tighter under the city, standards in the county, it is unzoned, and anything can go on there right now, anything. And I think this is the best of the options that I see. So, I'm going to move that we make a motion, we approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion at all? All right. All those in favor, just signify by hand up. One, two, three, four. All right. Those who vote against it, signal with hand up. That's two. The motion carries. It's approved.
I probably need to talk to you, talk to the Planner. I'm sorry. We as Commissioners, know what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're still, yeah, we're still in the meeting. There's no public, I'm sorry. Yeah. Everything is a share.
Thank you, Dr. Lohorn. Okay, I'll move forward and Planning can kick in when they get a chance. The next item is PC 2025-17. This is a request to rezone the parcel located at 1203 Sopkins Avenue. And we will get the staff report, please.
I'm sorry, we're still in the meeting.
Staff report, please. Sir?
Yeah, but not during the meeting.
Sir? Sir? I'm Chairman here, and you're going to have to leave if you will not let us get forward.
I misunderstood you. I thought you said I could ask.
I did, but I thought you just were going to have one statement. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be rude, but we, all right. It wasn't intentional. All right. Staff report, please. This is PC 2025-17.
Yes, this is a request to rezone the parcel located at 1203 Sopkins Avenue from Campus to NC 6.1. It's County Tax Map Number 999-12-016. This is a very unique property. It is located on Sopkins Avenue, which is off of Oakland Avenue. And as you can see, it's surrounded mostly by city, but it's on the edge of a donut hole. It was zoned campus because when it was founded, back, I think it was in the 1990s, it was, there was a small church on this location. So, when they zoned it, they zoned it to campus, which is appropriate for a church. So, the, through the years, it ceased being a church, it became a laundromat, and then we've had people questioning, trying to operate it as a store or as a club. We've had a few not-quite-appropriate uses try to go in there. And the latest iteration was a place called Daddy Bummies. And so, I was approached by the owners, and they said they decided they want to subdivide the lot, they want to rezone it to residential so that they can then subdivide it and put two single-family houses on it, which would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And this is one of those where we're like, yes, we would love to support this one. So, that is their request for the NC 6.1, which is what everything around it is zoned. And again, that is for single-family only.
Are they going to tear down the existing building?
No, they want to, and they are going to have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals just for variances on setbacks. They do want to take that building and turn it into a single-family house, subdivide the lot right, if you can see in the picture there, the parking marks, they would put the dividing line through there and divide off the remainder of the parcel. So, they would need variances on setbacks because it'd be two properties, there's supposed to be 6,000 square feet, they both, each side would be about 5,800. But it still would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and we feel it would be an appropriate use for it. And we just, I'm sure the neighbors would be glad to get the commercial use out of there. So, that is what the request is. And like I said, they'll just go to the BZA after the rezoning, if the rezoning goes through. So, that concludes staff's report.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Commissioners, have any questions of staff? If none, we do have a, this is scheduled for a public hearing. And if anyone would like to come forward far this request or against this request, you're welcome to come forward, identify yourself. Is there anyone in this large group that would like to come forward? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this. And call for a motion.
You said the staff recommend approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Make the motion approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted, or is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like signs, nay, and the ayes have it. All right. I'm excited about that use. And I think the Commissioner next to me is also.
Yeah. They're running.
Okay. Last item is PC 2025-18. There will be a public hearing portion of this, but this is a request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance. Ms. Lane?
Yes, sir. The request is just, it was brought to staff's attention that we did not address anywhere in the ordinance when one comes, a developer runs across properties that contain graves, cemeteries, or graveyards. And so, this is just being added to the portion of the ordinance that deals with special situations. This would be for development of properties that contain graves, cemeteries, graveyards, which I've learned are when they're attached to a church. So, I doubt this will fall in too often with that, but it might. Or other-like facilities for the final disposition of human remains. This would apply in all zoning districts and to all development, including subdivisions. The grave, cemetery, graveyard, or other-like facility shall be determined by a professional archaeologist or other methods deemed appropriate by the Planning Director to determine the boundary and confirmation of the cemetery. And that archaeologist or other licensed professional would determine the boundaries and provide information on the history, provide maps showing the location and the orientation relative to the site, describe it and how they found this and documented it, and then the coordinates of the boundary. And then, the requirements would be that they would be deeded as a separate lot, accessed by a minimum of 20-foot-wide private or public easement. Lots deeded separately containing the graves would include the boundary of the cemetery and shall include the buffer yard requirements established, which is a 25-foot buffer yard provided around the perimeter of the cemetery that does not include any graves, but no landscaping would be required in that. It must be accessible, they shall be fenced in, it was suggested but not required. And during construction, it must be staked until the certificate of occupancy is achieved for any contiguous properties, just so that there's no mistaken getting involved with the cemetery, not meaning to. So, that is what the amendment would say, and that's the purposes for it. So, that concludes staff's report.
All right, Commissioners. Any questions?
As far as the fencing goes, it would seem to me if there's stone, headstones and stuff like that there, people could jump a four-foot fence and desecrate a grave or something like that. I mean, every grave I've ever seen that had a fence around it was at least seven feet. You know, if you look at, most of them have them, some of them have it all. Where did we get the four feet from? Was there, is there like a, just a pick or something, or?
I think we did research other municipalities' ordinances, and some of them didn't require fences at all, some of them did require fences. And we, out of the other, you know, looking at other municipalities and governments and counties and such, we picked the four feet. We thought it was reasonable to delineate, but these cemeteries wouldn't necessarily be locked up.
Sure.
I mean, they, you know, the fence isn't required, and even if there was a fence, you know, there's no requirement to lock it up so people could freely go in.
So, four foot the minimum? It could be higher?
That's right. Four foot's the minimum. Yes, it could be higher, yes. Well, it says fencing shall not be greater than four foot in height. I mean, that could be changed. I mean, we could change that to...
I mean, for me, I would, I just read that, and I was like, you know, four foot seems, you got a bunch of kids jumping up for four foot, and they don't know what they're doing. You know, they kick these things down, and particularly if they're around developments or something like that, or commercial stuff. That's just my opinion. I don't know what the Commissioners feel like, but, I mean, there's a reason Mount Hill Cemetery has a fence on a lock around that cemetery. My own family graveyard down in Coward has a fence around it too, so.
Is that height?
It's, people kept going in and messing stuff up, so, I think six foot or something like that.
But is there any way in there we can change that four to six?
I was going to ask Mr. Dudley.
Well, we could just take out the height requirement.
I mean, if you want to do a minimum, I mean, I just think of, I don't think it should be limited to four foot.
How about no less than four feet and stuff? More than.
Yeah, because some of them don't have a fence at all.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I like, that's pretty good, no less than four foot. That way, that way does...
It's got to be four feet.
Four feet or greater.
No, when trips are over or anything, it's still four foot. But you got to, you know, you got to physically try to climb something. That's my opinion on that, just to deter people from getting in.
Mr. Dudley, do we do that in the form of a motion, or?
Yes, that would be in the form of a motion to amend...
What did you say, Charles?
I would, I would make a motion that we just amend the language to say no less than four, offensive, no less than four.
There you go. That'd be perfect.
And to require a fence every time? Because right now, it says no fence is required.
Well, I just think if you're going to put one up, it just seems to me it would waste our time if it's any less than four foot. I don't know why you're putting a two-foot fence up, or just, I don't understand that language.
Well, who is, who's going to be adhering to this?
Everyone.
Property owner or the city?
It would be the property owner.
Right. So, I mean, it's up to them whether they want to protect their graveyard, right?
That's correct, yes.
I mean, you have some homes with a private plot, you know, on their property, and to make them build an eight-foot fence around one grave, it'd be a little awkward. So, I think you need to leave in, possibly leave in, if they choose not to put a fence around it, they have that right.
Sure.
It says it's permitted but not required. That's what it says now.
Permitted but not required, yeah.
But I don't think a maximal, I think, I don't know how you, I don't know, I don't think, I don't think, well, if they're not going to limit, you know, maybe it should be no height limit, I guess, I guess.
Well, that's, and that's what I was getting at. If this were city protecting the property, then we probably want to be a little more secure, but the property owner makes that decision really if owned the cemetery property. I don't want to be required to build a fence or not.
Well, one way to change it may be to change the hiding and instead of, and create a different max height. I mean, we don't necessarily want a 10-foot fence around it either.
Right.
You know, in the code, we typically allow six-foot fences typically.
Could you say no greater than six foot?
No greater than six foot, and eight foot with a variance is typically what we allow for fences in general.
We could reference the fence ordinance, the fence part of the ordinance.
We could, yeah. But I personally do like the opacity requirement. That way, you're not creating something for someone to hide behind necessarily. If it's 50% opaque, then, you know, you could still see what's going on inside the cemetery.
Sure. I agree with that.
Did it require any landscaping? I, I...
No landscaping.
I just said, I didn't know if you, I mean, like Charles said, you don't want someone to, if they have a personal plot, to be planting...
You won't tell them how they...
Not on their own property, so.
Right.
I guess no greater than six foot is, that's our ordinance now, right? With our fences, all of that.
Well, if they're actively seeking plots, like selling plots, should there be some type of maintenance required?
Oh, that falls in a whole, wouldn't that fall in a whole other thing? Have a cemetery, if you own a cemetery, you do plots?
This is a historic cemetery.
I think we're talking about stuff that's unearthed that you find, or...
Gotcha, okay.
As, you know, as the city grows and, you know, some of these old farms... As, you know, as, as the city grows and, you know, some of these old farms and rural areas are developed, oftentimes, family cemeteries or historic cemeteries are found. And we're just looking for ways to preserve them. The state also has some mechanisms to protect grave sites. But this, this brings it, you know, this allows us as the city to require some preservation there instead of being as reactionary to things.
Yeah, I think our concern should be the height. We don't want a 10-foot fence going up. That's what, I think that should be our concern. The property owners should decide whether they want to put a four-foot or less. But I think six feet is.
The president on this, I guess, yeah.
No more than, no more than six.
So let's summarize some, because we went from no fence to required fence, you know, no, no more than four feet, no less than four feet. So where are we right now?
I think Charles has the current ordinance. You can put a fence up if you're not, whatever you like to do, but it can't be any more than six foot or eight foot without a variance. Is that correct? Yeah.
So are we doing this because when the developer developed land, so he could preserve that development, could preserve that cemetery property?
That's the way I understand it.
Yeah.
That's what you, that's what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
And then the developer itself, to go on the side of what the city allowed them to know that there's no greater than six foot, for that developer to put the fence up, that's what we have to.
Or not put one at all.
Right, right.
But I think we know, we worth for funeral. I think that when a fellow developed land, especially close to a graveside, he should do something to protect it. Because see, if you build a house and develop it there, you create problems for that funeral home to be trampled over, gravestone be knocked down and all. I think we should require to put two-foot fence up to preserve that property for funeral. Because there's a, funeral homes, graveside, you find, like you say, in the woods somewhere, and people buy their land, and they don't know where that's the cemetery back there now. But see, the only way you find it when you start messing with the woods and stuff, and then you find, you know, headstones and all back up in there. So I think that what it is, that fellow that developed that land, he should be recommended to put a fence up to protect.
Well, that gets back to the argument, what if it is a private graveyard on your property?
But see, what it is, he bought the property. He wants to.
No, he's been in the family for 200 years. Are we going to make him put a fence up around?
Well, it happened, well, it happened down here at North Vista. There was the gravesites back there, and he put a fence back there to protect, you know, protect the gravesites.
Mr. Dudley, are there requirements, once the gravesite is discovered, they have to report it and file it with the state, and the state takes over?
Yeah, the state has requirements that, you know, during an active, you know, excavation or development, if a grave's found, they're supposed to stop and document that and then preserve it.
It is illegal in South Carolina to desecrate.
It is illegal. It is, it is not legal to do that. There is a mechanism to move graveyards and to move, to move cemeteries. But that's a whole different process.
Maybe that you're concerned about, the state to tax that property.
Yeah, protect, protect property, see, what I'm saying is, if you don't put something there to preserve that, I call it a sacred spot, everybody could be trampling over it. That's, that's the way I look at it. See, we all should be something like we do a house, we put a buffer up. We should be buffer up for the people that have to be doing this, arresting.
What if the state doesn't require? You want the city to step?
We redoing our ordinance there, that's what we doing here.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
The order that says a 25-foot buffer yard shall be provided.
Yeah.
Around the perimeter of the cemetery and shall not include locations of any graves. Doesn't that address that?
It does create a distance buffer between the edge of the graveyard. So it does create a 25-foot buffer area in there.
Now, he's not talking about a fence buffer, he's just talking about a distance from development to where the gravestones are.
I understand that.
Without a fence.
Yeah, I understand that 100%. But like them still saying that, because see, they can develop and come in and block, and you can't get to it.
No, the law states you have to be able to get to it. Anybody buried on that plot of property, you have to have access.
Okay, all right.
I know that's the state law.
Okay, so now where are we?
Because somebody tried, somebody tried to block my family in Coward. They said we couldn't go, we couldn't go, because they said my dad's, and he, and he, so no, you can't do that. You can't block the guy from getting to a grave.
And just one thing to consider is, along with that 25-foot buffer all the way around, if it's, you know, they find a bunch of graves scattered, it could be quite a large area. That's a lot of fencing.
That's right.
All right, so I think Mr. Moses is set on requiring fence. And I think we've had discussions in both directions, so.
I just don't, I can't, I can't agree with requiring the private property owner to put up fences.
And I think that'll come out in the vote. Let me do this, this won't take but a second. I'm going to open the public hearing and close the public hearing. And now I'll call for a motion.
On what?
A motion to, well, whoever makes a motion.
I think the motion that the father should be required, if you do build up houses, that's one thing, the whole thing about, he should be having some kind of, where you can get the 25-foot buffer required to put a fence up to protect that sacred ground.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You got to die one day.
I'll ask one more time. And I'll be in heaven, so.
You can put houses there, and there's going to be a whole development back there.
The only discussion, simply because that puts a burden, if it's like someone said, it's a lot of fence, like Elaine said, that, that's a, that's a burden, I think.
Okay. I have a motion, and I do not have a second, so the motion fails. Okay. I call for another motion.
I would move that we allow the language that is written, that the buffer stays in place, that the fence is optional. If the fence is built, it can be no bigger than six feet.
And it remains 50% opaque.
Right, and it remains 50% opaque, right. And then I think we said eight feet.
Whatever the standard.
Yeah, with a variance request.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, man.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call, I tell you what, let's raise hands, like Dr. Longhorn did. Everybody in favor, raise your hand. Against? We have, did you sustain?
No, I, yeah.
You sustain?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, four. I have one against and one sustain. And the motion carries. All right, that was interesting. We had, we had a good discussion on that. It went everywhere.
It sure did. We went around the block. That was good.
Okay, so with that said, Mr. Dudley, any old or new business that we need to be aware of?
No, I think I don't have any news.
Okay, Mr. Moses, what you do best?
Well, I guess we're going to stay here next week.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion, a second, adjourn, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.